Petition 1118, Committee on Ordinance Review. amend Chapter 22 of the Revised Ordinances entitled zoning by amending Section 22-14, adoption and amendment to require notification of abutters for zoning changes and the costs associated will be paid by the petitioner. I think that although this is a legal affairs petition, I think that this was largely the work of another committee, so I'll turn that over to Counselor Zephyr. You can explain what's going on.
Yeah, sure. Thank you very much, Councilor Dubrowski. This came to be in the or under the auspices of the Committee on or Subcommittee on Ordinance Review, Special Committee. I'm the Chair of that committee. Counsel Fekley is the Clerk. Counsel Badans is the third member. And this came out of a couple of different instances where petitioners came before the City Council and petitioned for zoning changes for specific parcels of land. And neighbors, people abutting these proposed, the parcels that were proposed to be changed, were never notified. There's no ordinance that requires notification of abutters. So, you know, based on our experience and thinking about the couple of recent examples that we've had, we thought we would address this in the Subcommittee on Ordinance Review. So what this does, this ordinance requires that any petitioner who is proposing to have a parcel rezoned must within 300 feet notify all of the abutters by certified mail. The process is handled, in this particular draft of the petition, by the City Clerk's office and is paid for by the petitioner. We thought that would be an efficient way to do it. We obviously asked for input from the City Clerk. She preferred to do it that way. She thought that in that case, if she's responsible for ensuring that people are notified, she'd rather have that, you know, job be part of the City Clerk's office. It also was reviewed at least twice, I believe, by Copman and Page, Brian Riley, who is our city solicitor, to ensure that it's consistent with Mass General law. And he came back on two separate occasions and said that it was, in fact, consistent with Mass General law. And I think he had some positive things to say about it. So that's what this is, basically. It is changing our local ordinance to ensure that if and when a petitioner comes before the City Council, to rezone any parcel of land. It could be, you know, from residence to commercial, from residence to industrial, from industrial to commercial, whatever the change in zoning district is, the requirement would be that abutters have to be notified.
We did get a letter from Brian Riley.
Yep.
It was received November 13th, 2017. "Lynn, I am responding to the Legal Affairs Committee's request for an opinion on petition 1118, which proposes an amendment to the zoning ordinance. In my opinion, the proposed addition would be consistent with Massachusetts law. I reviewed a draft of this proposed ordinance earlier this year when it was being discussed by the Ordinance Review Committee. Essentially, it would add a requirement for written notice to abutters and abutters to abutters within 300 feet, and a public hearing for any filed petition to rezone a parcel or otherwise make a change to the zoning map. Mass General laws, Chapter 48, has a similar notice and hearing requirement when an application for a special permit or variance is filed. When there is a proposed ordinance amendment, however, Chapter 48 requires a public hearing but no direct notice to abutters. The amendment would fill a gap in Chapter 48, but it would not be inconsistent with the statute, in my opinion. As with any zoning ordinance amendment, there is a requirement for a public hearing of the City Council and of the Planning Board. These can be two separate hearings or one joint hearing. I note that Section 144A provides that the petitioner, after obtaining the certified abutters list, shall provide the City Clerk's office with materials to handle the mailing. I believe that was at your suggestion. While the Planning Board hearing notice would be the petitioner's responsibility. Not a legal issue at all, just noting the difference. Otherwise, the balance of Section 2214 remains the same, and I do not see any problems. If there are further questions, please let me know. Very truly yours, Brian Riley." My understanding is there's a slight issue that may require some further time? I don't know if you want to elaborate on that?
I'm not sure what the issue is. Well, I'll state what my understanding is, that the way the ordinance is drafted, it includes notices to abutters, but not necessarily to the parcel owners. So parcel owners that live out of town are not included in this, and we can certainly amend that if that takes care of the concern.
Yeah, the issue is, is that we were thinking sort of, you know, the usual case is that the abutters affected.
Right.
But, you know, what really drove me to think about this was that we have a petition on this evening for the first time on our calendar, where the petitioner is not the owner of the parcel being affected. So we would want the same notice to be given to the parcels affected if, in fact, the petitioner is not the person that owns the land affected. So I agree with you. I think it just requires a tweak to suggest that notice be given to the abutters or to the owners of parcels affected that are not owned by the petitioner. Obviously, if the petitioner owns the parcel, they don't need notice. But if the petitioner is not the owner of the parcel, then the owner of the parcels affected should also be given notice along with the abutters.
How would the owner of, how would the owners of a parcel, not the petitioners, not be abutters? I'm not, do you know what I mean?
Well, because the parcel that's seeking to be, the zoning change is not an abutter. It's a...
Okay, I get it.
All right.
I do. That's fine.
Can I ask the committee a question?
Sure.
If I may? So, I'm not clear on this, and I apologize. If it is clear, I just don't see it. I'm looking at this as being commercial, industrial, residential, correct?
I think it's any and all.
It's a rezoning.
Map changes.
It's a rezone, any kind of map change.
So it doesn't matter what kind of zoning happens to be.
Does not.
So what, so I'll give you an example. If we're notifying the abutters, you know, usually that list, I believe, is acquired through the City Hall, and it's usually the owner of the abutting properties that would get the notification. If it happens to be, if we're looking at commercial, and let's take a look at Jitec, and say, for example, there was a significant zoning issue that was going to happen up there that would affect a tenant, someone who's renting a property for industrial purposes, and it would affect their operation, they're not necessarily notified because what happens is the owner of the property is notified. So we could take it all the way over to a residential situation where you might have someone renting in the neighborhood. They're not notified, but they've been living there for 20-plus years, you know, renting from a family. They are taxpayers indirectly, and they are registered voters, possibly. But what happens is they're off the grid because what we did was we basically notified the owner of the property that they're renting from about the changes. So what happens is, we as Ward Councilors, all of a sudden, you could take an isolated request, and it would pass the test, but in the meantime, the appropriate people that we want to notify would not have a clue what's going on unless they read the notice in the newspaper or followed it through some other means. So I'm just concerned, you know, when I say, when I think of a butter, it's not necessarily the owner of the abutting parcel. It could also be the tenant or the resident at that particular site, too. So that's just my concern.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
So if the Ward Five Council is concerned about the occupant by way of a lease or a tenancy, I mean, first of all, if you're talking, I can't think of one situation where they would ultimately be impacted because if they're, say, they're a residential tenant, and it was, the land was being rezoned to a commercial purpose, there would be a prior nonconforming use, and they would be able to use, continue to use the property as they were at the time of the change. And being only a tenant or a leaseholder, I don't think there'd be any danger that they would be, their lease rights would be affected. And I think it goes the same way. If you were going to downzone a commercial or industrial piece of land to residential, it's the same situation. The building would exist, there'd be a tenancy in place, there would be a prior nonconforming use, they'd get to continue to use the property. But it would certainly affect the owner because at some point, if they wanted to expand the property, abandon the use in terms of taking the building down, things of that nature, then it would affect the landowner. But I can't imagine a situation where a tenant would be directly impacted.
Yeah, through the chair, if I may respond to that. The recent zoning change that took place off of Central Street, I won't name the parcel because I think they're doing a great job, and I supported it. How they resolved the concerns, like I talked about, I was in opposition to a drive-up window, you know, for coffee, for example, and music and things like that playing at some of these stations. But the way that they dealt with it was basically they bought the neighborhood, remember? They bought all the parcels that abutted them. So therefore, their tenants will know the noise, and they'll, you know, it's probably part of the lease that they kind of have to accept what's happening in their neighborhood. But if I was renting a place there, and all of a sudden now I'm on the third floor overlooking this parcel, and I've been there 20 years, I'm going to be a little upset if I wasn't in the scheme of discussion regarding my input. So that's just, you know, that's an isolated case, but it is something that I think is a real issue. So I don't know if there's any way, any consideration whether it is or not, it's fine. But I'm going to support it. But the position would be that people, we want people to be notified, that's the key. And this is kicking it up a notch. So if we can take it to that next level, if it's feasible, if it's not, it's not. But I rest my case on that.
I just don't, I don't think you could even think about notifying tenants on, you know, will without leases and everything. Let me just be totally, there'd be no way to ascertain by way of a list who they are, even. So I, while I understand your concern, you did correctly point out that the quality of notice that they're getting now is less than they would have under this proposed amendment. So the situation only gets better, not worse.
Thank you.
Okay. We also got letters from...
I just have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
Would a standard lease have any wording that would indicate that the lease-er would have to tell his tenants if something like that changed?
In a residential setting, doubtful. In a commercial or industrial setting, possibly. But even then, more than likely not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, we had letters from the Building Commissioner and the Zoning Board of Appeals, both in favor of making this amendment. We also had a letter from the Planning Board, which I think I should read, dated November 8th, 2017. "Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting on November 6, 2017, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the above referenced petition, provided that clarification is provided for the following two questions. One, the language is vague for instances where the petitioner is a public entity such as the Planning Board. How does the City Council specifically intend to handle such cases, and who would assume the costs? Number two, how will this ordinance revision work with large parcels of land which may generate a large number of abutters? If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact my office." And it's signed by Kristin Kelly, the Director of Planning Development. So I'll turn this back over to Counselor Zephyr.
Mm-hmm.
And do you have that letter?
I do have that letter.
Oh, okay. So I don't know if you want to respond to the Planning Board's questions?
Sure. The language is vague in the, and I know Brian Riley looked at this because that was a conversation that we had, that was a discussion that the committee had. So if you look at F, what number it is, 14-4, paragraph F, it says, "Where the petitioner is a public entity, such notification procedures may be satisfied by other means acceptable to the Leominster City Council." So that is vague, and it basically comes down to however the council wants to handle it. If, you know, if it's the mayor's office coming down looking or the Building Department, you know, if it's a public entity, the city, then...
I have a suggestion.
Sure, go ahead.
I would say we just modify that language to suggest where the petitioner is a public entity, the city pay. I mean, I think the Planning Board's concern is what budget does it come out of? Because if they don't have enough money in their budget, they're not going to be able to pay the legal advertising fees. But, I mean, the city shouldn't avoid the same requirements that, you know, a private party would. I mean, we want people to have notice, right?
No, that's the whole point.
So if it says the city has to pay the expense, the city has to pay the expense, and, you know, the mayor will have to appropriately budget...
Well, whichever department, whichever department, whichever public entity is coming down will have to assume that cost.
Right. It would have to be budgeted.
Yep.
Okay. And number two, I imagine the answer is notice is notice, and if you have more abutters, you've got to give them notice.
Exactly.
All right. Are there any other counselors with questions, concerns, points of view? Seeing nobody. How do you, how does your committee want to handle the amendment issue?
Can I just point out that I'm not sure that you asked for public comment.
Right, we need to have public comment.
Oh, yeah, I will do that.
Let's do that first.
You want to do that first? Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council either for or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either for or against this petition? How are you? We all know who you are, but if you could just identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Rula. I live at 54 Low Street. I do have a question. If there is a person who wants to file this, and there are a number, this is an exorbitant cost for one person to pay, from a residential to a residential. I'm not talking about commercially, but don't you think this would be a hardship on individuals who want to change? For example, we have a petition that we submitted, or John Bulger submitted today. If we had to do this and notify all the, we wouldn't be able to do it. We wouldn't be able to ask the city to look at our request. So I'm concerned about this, if you could explain it.
Six dollars and 58 cents per butter is what you're talking about, certified mail. We would have to weigh that cost versus people knowing that are affected by something very important around their real estate. So I think when you weigh the one against the other, the six fifty-eight per butter is not a burden that shouldn't be shouldered.
But if there's a number of people, then that does get a little costly for some people that can, may not be able to afford this. But we'd like to see a change in the city and have a voice to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And third time, is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the council either for or against this petition? Okay, seeing none? I'll again turn it back to the chairperson. You know, it seems there's, there may be one, maybe two slight amendments, and I don't know if you want to try to take those up this evening, or I can give this public hearing further time.
You know, I mean, I'm happy to, what, give it further time, or should we...
I think the one the Planning Board raised is very simple, but the other one, I think, might require a little, a better look.
A review by the Copman and Page? I don't have a problem with that. I think further time is fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me just inquire of the clerk when we can do another public hearing?
November 27th, 7 o'clock.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue the public hearing in this matter to November 27th, 2017, at 7 o'clock PM. Thank you.
Okay. You want to go to the public forum? We are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is to allow any person in the audience to speak on any matter listed on the council agenda. The members of the City Council will not be answering any questions, but will be listening to the opinions expressed by the speaker. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. The following has signed up to speak, Pat Scorzelli. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Pat Scorzelli, 78 Maple Avenue, Leominster, Mass. I'm here to speak on Legal Affairs 13-18. Just for clarification, because you can't always put everything in the petition, and I'm certainly here if you need to ask questions. The reason, well, the request for Katy Lane is simple. People have lived there. It's a neighborhood that's well-established, and no open lots there. Katy Lane has not ever been accepted by the city. It's, you know, again, it's fully occupied. The thing that's different here is we complied with all the things that the city requires for requests for acceptance of the street, but the little caveat is that it be done by eminent domain. That's really for the benefit of the people that live there, because what would happen under the scenario, as I'm to understand it, is each person would then have to go and have their deeds redone with their banks, get releases, et cetera, et cetera. So we believe that the deed we prepared for the city, for the mayor to sign, everything is in compliance, as if it were being taken the normal way this council, in fact, does take property. The request for eminent domain is merely for the convenience of all those homeowners and the cost that would be incurred, and we, as the petitioner, are willing to pay the cost that might be required by the city to affect this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all that has signed up, so I will ask, does any member of the audience want to speak at the public forum? Once again, would any member of the audience like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would any member of the audience like to speak at the public forum? Sure, step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, John Bulger, 365 Pleasant Street. And I have been going over the petition, and I don't know whether this is the time or place to make a little modification or not. There's a few lots that we kind of went overboard on that we'd like to remove, and also I'd like to have Dorothy's name added to the petition, too. I think that extra paper got maybe lost in the shuffle somewhere. But I don't know whether now is the time or place to do it or not.
We can, we can talk about it during the meeting, and we'll probably give it further time, and then you can work with the City Clerk and let her know what your wishes are.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? Once again, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? If not, I declare the public forum closed. Okay, we have a 7:20 interview with a new appointee. Is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to have that interview?
I am. Mr. President, we have an appointee for the Council on Aging, Donald Bastarash. Is Mr. Bastarash here? Would you like to come in? Can you come around? Could you check to make sure your microphone is on, please? There you go. And did I pronounce your last name right?
Excuse me?
Did I pronounce your last name right, Bastarash? Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
Oh. Did I pronounce your last name correctly, Bastarash?
Donald Bastarash.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
So we have received your name from the mayor as an appointee to the Council on Aging with a term to expire April 15th, 2020.
Yeah.
And what we do is, we like to have our appointees come down, and so we can meet them, and the public can meet you, and you can get to know us. My name is Gail Fekley, and I'm the Ways and Means chairperson. And the other members of the committee are Counselor Marchand and Counselance Yanni. So we all know the Council on Aging does tremendous work for the senior citizens of the city of Leominster, and the senior center is very well attended and utilized. And so what we'd like to know is a little bit about your background, what you feel as though you can offer to the council, and just kind of get to know you a little bit.
Well, I've been going there every, almost every day for the last 15 years, and I was on the board previously. I was the chairman for a while. And I haven't been active lately, but I heard that there was a position open on the board, so I thought I'd be active again and try to get back on the board again and help whatever I can with any problems they may have.
What kind of things are going on down at the, in the senior center and on the council right now? Anything in particular that you think you could help out with, or...
About what?
Any kind of activities that you feel as though you could help out with, or some new ideas?
Well, I have been doing some electrical forum down there. I'm doing a survey right now to find out what circuit breakers shut off, what in the building, because it's been a mess for years. And I'm almost completed that survey right now. So they know where most of the circuit breakers are that shut the panels off, the power for circuits in the building, yeah.
Yep, that's important. I'm sure they're, they're, they're very pleased with that.
Yes.
Are you a licensed electrician? Are you an electrician?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, good. Do you do work on the side? We can talk later.
No, I do not.
Because I know it's very hard to find an electrician.
I retired from that, but I'm doing this as a volunteer.
Yeah, that's great. I'm sure they're very pleased that you're volunteering that work. Well, that in and of itself, I think, Mr. Bastarash, makes you a very good appointee for this position. So I'm going to hand the next questions on to Counselor Marchand.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing, because I hear the senior center is moving to 224 Mary Mav, so if you report there tomorrow, I'll give you the list of things to check out. So, seriously, thank you very much for your willingness to get back involved with it, and I'm sure you could be a great asset to everything that's necessary and needed over there. So thank you for serving.
All right, thank you.
Counselance Yanni.
I know Mr. Bastarash, many years, and I'm glad to see that he's coming back and continuing to do a great job in the past. I hope he's seen the senior center.
Hey.
Great. Do any of the counselors have any questions or comments? Counsel Frida.
Yeah. I remember Mr. Bastarash being on the committee and doing a lot of good things and a lot of good comments over the years.
Yes.
So nice to have you come back. You did a lot of good things.
I also did some work with the food processing, picking up the groceries at the grocery store.
You were always there, every time I was there.
On a volunteer basis.
Is that, any other counselors? All right, well, thank you very much for coming, so we can just kind of ask you some questions. And I know, I see a lot of the counselors already know you, but I didn't know you, so I'm glad I have met you.
Okay.
And certainly going to be suggesting that your nomination passed.
Okay, thank you.
To be on the council for aging. All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
I will now take a roll call of the honorable members of the Leominster City Council, beginning with Counsel Frida.
President.
Councilor Dubrowski.
President.
Present.
Counselor Shafal Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Feckley.
Present.
Counselor Vedanta.
Present.
Counselor Antiani.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Marchand.
Present.
And I am present. All nine members are present this evening. Does the vice president have any records to approve this evening? Counselor Feckley?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the city council meeting of October twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on record.
Okay, so the vice president finds the minutes of October twenty-third of two thousand and seventeen to be in order. Does anybody have any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, those will be placed on file, and we will move right into communications from the mayor, beginning with C dash sixteen. Madam Clerk.
C sixteen, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor. Adopted Mass General Law Chapter thirty-one, Section fifty-eight A, which allows the city to hire veterans over the age of thirty-two at time of appointment.
And C dash sixteen is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Regular course.
Okay, C dash sixteen has been given regular course. C dash seventeen.
C seventeen, relative to the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars to a police department overtime account, same to be transferred from the police department salary and wages account.
C dash seventeen is referred to the chairman of finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Okay, C dash seventeen has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions. Fourteen dash eighteen.
Fourteen eighteen, John P. Bolger, and ten registered voters. He's owned the following parcels on Pleasant Street and Low Street, from Residence B to Residence A. Pleasant Street, West Side, map three forty-two, lots twelve and thirteen; map four eighty-one, lots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty; map five twenty-one, lot one and thirty-nine; map four eighty-eight, lots one, five, six, seven, and eight; map four ninety-four, lots eighteen, three A, three dash one A, three dash two A, three dash two B, and three dash two C. Pleasant Street, East Side, map five sixty-one, lots thirty-five A, thirty-six A, thirty-seven A; map three forty, lots one and two; map four ten, lots one, two, three, four, five, twenty-two, and twenty-three; map four ninety-six, lots one, two, three, four, five, six, six A, and seven; map four eighty-one, lot sixteen; Low Street, map four eighty-eight, lot five.
Okay, and fourteen dash eighteen is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, the building inspector, and the city solicitor. And we also need to vote on a hearing for December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, at seven o'clock PM.
Okay, so fourteen dash eighteen will be referred to, will be given regular course and referred to the planning board, the ZVA, the building inspector, the city solicitor.
Actually, I, I don't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, I'm sorry. I just need, if you could just come back to me before we do anything.
Okay, sure. And we're gonna vote to establish a hearing on December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, at seven PM. Is there something else you need to?
It just occurred to me that we'll have some new members. I don't know if there's a problem, if we have a public hearing in December, and then we've gotta go into January with new members, if that creates any kind of issue. I mean, we still have a large majority, but it is a zoning change, so.
Right.
You know, maybe we should push.
We've gotta have, we have to establish a hearing within sixty days of receiving the petition.
All right. So why don't we, why don't we take it up again, and then on the, on the eleventh?
On the eleventh, you could just give it further time.
Just don't, if we just don't discuss any merits of it, we just further time it, right, and continue the hearing to January?
Okay.
That's valid.
Yep.
Mr. President, if I may, through the chair.
Counselor Marchand, sure.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible that we could get a map on this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Not at the petitioner's expense. We should be able to put something together, either through the assessors' office or the planning department. If they can just give us a plot and highlight which lots have been identified in this, I think it would be kind of helpful to know the exact zoning request.
No, that's a good suggestion. I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, all those in favor of establishing the hearing of December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, at seven PM, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, that hearing has been established. Moving on to fifteen dash eighteen.
Fifteen eighteen, Karen Brewer. Accept the westly end of Sartell Road as a public way.
Okay, fifteen dash eighteen is referred to the chairwoman of public service.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the planning board and the building inspector.
Okay, fifteen dash eighteen has been given regular course with a referral to the planning board and the building inspector. Appointments.
Office of Emergency Management Communications Unit, Kimberly K. Allen.
This appointment is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, and we will ask the city clerk to invite Kimberly down for an interview.
Okay, this appointment's been given regular course, and the appointee will be invited down for an interview. Moving on to matters before the city council, items under Ways and Means. C dash thirteen, is the chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, C thirteen, D.J. Mazzarella, mayor, exempt Greg Chapdolane, purchasing agent, from the conflict of interest law as provided for in Massachusetts General Law Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-B, as he will be taking the position at the Department of Public Works as replacement snowplow operator on an as-needed basis. I have attached also a letter from the mayor dated October seventeenth to the city council, which basically says exactly the same as what I've just read, except for the second paragraph, which says, "Attached, please find the disclosure of financial interest by municipal employee. If you have any questions, please feel free to call my office at any time. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor." And we do have the disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest as required by General Law two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-three B three, completed by Mr. Chapdolane. And I do know that we have in the past accepted that some city workers could do some work for the city if they do have this on file, so I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be granted, but I'll go to my committee.
Counselor Marchand?
Through the chair, I concur.
Counselor Antiani, you all set?
I concur.
Okay. So it sounds like unanimous recommendation by the Ways and Means Committee to grant C dash thirteen. Is there any discussion? Counselor Antiani.
I, I don't have a discussion. I just have compliments for Greg. He's done an excellent job as a purchasing agent, and along with the events that he gets involved with for the city, and I think that what he's looking to do is enjoy life a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any discussion? Seeing, seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash thirteen, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash thirteen has been granted. Moving on to items under legal affairs. Eleven dash eighteen, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Petition eleven eighteen, Committee on Ordinance Review. amend Chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances entitled zoning by amending Section twenty-two dash fourteen, adoption and amendment to require notification of abutters for zoning changes, and the costs associated will be paid by the petitioner. We had a public hearing earlier this evening. That public hearing was continued to November twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, to allow the petitioners to incorporate a couple of slight amendments to the new ordinance, so the recommendation will be further time.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of legal affairs to give further time to eleven dash eighteen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving eleven dash eighteen further time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, eleven dash eighteen has been given further time. Moving on to thirteen dash eighteen, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Mr. President, petition thirteen eighteen. Pat Scorzelli, as agent for Highland Manor Realty Trust, accept the deed for Katy Lane and request the street be taken by eminent domain by the city of Leominster. Petitioner offers to pay any legal fees that may be incurred. Mr. President, I, I have a conflict with this particular petition, in that I represent the, the landowner of, of the property proposed to be deeded over, so I would ask Counselor Frida to take over at this point.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have everything back in on this? I think we were waiting for.
We don't have anything from the DPW yet.
Haven't heard from DP, and that's, that's a, that's a big piece.
Right.
The, can I just mention that the letter from the planning board may be dispositive of it?
I'm sorry?
We do have a letter from the planning board back, and it may be dispositive of the petition, in my view at least.
I don't have that copy.
But we're also waiting for the city solicitor. We haven't gotten anything back from the city solicitor.
You know, I also was asking the city clerk, I, I don't think this was referred to the mayor.
I think we're gonna be giving it further time anyway.
I think that we need to get an opinion from the mayor as well, because he's gonna have to initiate Copman and Page to do any legal work.
Okay.
Associated with this, and, and I don't think it was referred to him.
Okay.
If it was, we haven't gotten anything back.
Recommendation, I think, would be further time. You agree with that?
Yeah, and refer it to the mayor as well. Just make sure we refer it to the mayor. Okay. All right, is there any?
Through the chair.
Counselor Marchand?
Madam Chair, did you also refer that to the city solicitor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Was this through the chair originally, it was?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yeah. So does anybody else from legal affairs have any, anything contrary than further time? No? Okay, so it sounds like a unanimous decision by the legal affairs committee to give thirteen dash eighteen further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving thirteen eighteen further time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, thirteen dash eighteen has been given further time. Moving on to the city of Leominster's financial report, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. I don't have an updated report, but I think I can kind of extrapolate from the last one. Not much has changed. We began the fiscal year on July one with a balance in the stabilization account of fourteen million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. With all of the appropriations made or on the calendar through tonight, we have two million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, leaving, if everything was, was ultimately approved, a new balance in the stabilization account of eleven million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Okay. All right. Counselor Shafal Zephyr, do you have any questions regarding that?
I don't have a question, but I do have a, a suggestion that we, I don't know if we ask the mayor, if we ask the comptroller, but we should really have an updated financial report for each meeting. It's every two weeks. I mean, we can extrapolate, we can guess, we can estimate as best we can, but it really would be helpful if we actually had the report.
Yeah, we usually get one. I don't know what happened this meeting, but the only difference between the last report and this report is the one communication for a hundred thousand dollars, so I just added that to the totals and did some quick math in my head, but I, I will reach out to the comptroller's office, and I think we're probably at that point pretty soon in the year where we should start probably getting municipal reports, too.
Yeah.
So we can see spent, too, and I'll ask him about that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments on the financial report? Seeing none, we will move into items under finance, beginning with C dash eleven. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash eleven, relative to the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to the highway department overtime account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This was before us at our last meeting, and we further timed it for some more information with respect to the necessity of the funds. I was able to contact the department and spoke to Ray Racine, and I also spoke to Roger Brooks today with respect to this particular communication, who sent me a written letter, which is on my phone here, so I'm gonna do my best to read it to the council and the public. It's addressed to me as the finance chair. Counselor Vedanta, I am responding to Ray Racine's request for additional funds for the highway overtime. The biggest drain from this appropriation has been the various projects involved in street lighting, which were not anticipated. I am enclosing a list of the overtime expenditures involving streetlight installation and replacement. The installation of lights on Research Drive was for the city-owned street to prepare for the registry of motor vehicles relocation. The lights at Carter Park were paid for from the Mass Works grant, but the installation was a city obligation. Finally, the, the burnouts were existing lights that needed replacement. These lights were replaced prior to the LED contract due to neighborhood requests. The LED project begins the week of December fourth and will take ten to twelve weeks to complete. Upon completion, less than one percent of the city's streetlights will need replacement on an annual basis. Please contact me if I can provide additional information. Attached to the letter is a very lengthy list of, detailed list of streetlight work, who the employees were, the amount of hours and dollars that were spent in connection therewith, and based on this new information with more detail, would be my position to grant C dash eleven. I will check with the members of my committee.
I had asked for that detail after the last meeting, so I haven't had a chance to look at it or review it. I appreciate the fact that you, you know, read it out. I would prefer to be able to read it, you know, myself and to see the list. Fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, so.
I, I understand. I'll check with Counselor Marchand. It would be my position to go forward with it, because I, I think there may be some time sensitivity to this. This work is ongoing, and I, I want to see that the work, you know, goes forward in orderly fashion. I understand your position, and, and certainly this information sooner would have been better. And I, I just received this letter literally about an hour ago, hour and a half ago, so, but I'll check with Counselor Marchand. Through the chair. I agree with the concern. I, I agree with everything that's been said. I had a brief conversation with, with Mr. Racine earlier today regarding a project at Doyle Field, and the time sensitivity to that project that DPW's involved with, and basically, you know, his response back to this when I asked him about it was, they, they're going a hundred miles an hour right now, as we know, trying to get a lot done before snow falls with the great season that we've had, and they're just, there's so many projects taking place. It's just, I know I'm five, it's, it's just, it seems like it's out of control. There's just so much happening up there right now. So, I, I specifically speaking, did not ask for, you know, line items of where the money was going, but I do see it up in my neighborhood specifically, you know, and, and time is really of the essence to pass it. It is pretty sensitive. If they don't get it, some of the things that they're working on may have to come to a halt at this point. I feel confident in being able to share that. Thank you. So I'm, I'm in favor of the communication.
Okay. So it looks like we have a majority in favor?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the finance committee to grant C dash eleven. Is there any discussion? Counselor Frida?
Yeah, I just think when we look at the DPW, as the counsel across from me mentioned, they're going a hundred miles an hour, and we gotta remember that a lot of their staff hasn't been replaced. When people retire, not a lot of them have been rehired. But these guys are going a hundred miles an hour, as you said, but they're also, there, there's not enough guys to do all the work, and I think we're in pretty good shape as a city. So, I'm, it probably sounds like a lot, but I think we probably have men down, so there could be a balance in there somewhere as well. So I, I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
Counselor Shafal Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, fifty thousand dollars, I'm sure that they, you know, can spend, need the money, but my question is, you know, if you're looking for fifty thousand dollars and you've come up with that number, there must be backup to support that, and that's what I was looking for. If you come up with a fifty thousand dollar number, a forty thousand dollar number, you know, how did you arrive at that number? There should be more information that's attached to it. So that was my question. I'm not arguing that they do or they don't need the money. I'm just looking for the detail to support the request for fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I understand. He did, as I said, provide as an attachment to the letter, all the, how they spent all their money, and how they, they had these unanticipated expenses. We, we do have to keep in mind, too, that the lighting project at Carter Park, there was a grant for thirty-eight thousand dollars, so that's leveraging some grant money. This money is leveraging some grant money. So they, he did attach all the overtime they expended through the autumn on all these lighting projects, which has put them in the position that they're in. and why they're requesting the money. There are dates here that go from, let's see, July 1, beginning of the fiscal year, all the way through, and there are pages of them, all the way through October 21. The projects, who worked, how many hours. So there is some detail. I agree that, you know, it would have been nicer to get this sooner, so we could have all examined it, but I still would like to go forward with it based on the amount of work that they're getting done and how much of a burden it is to the department. I appreciate the counselor's position.
Okay. Counsel Feckley?
I wanted to weigh in, too, that I appreciate the Counsel-at-Large's position as well. That we have two weeks to get this information to us. If they, if this is an emergency situation and they wanted to get this work done because of the weather, then the information should have been forthcoming before tonight. However, I am a big supporter of the Department of Public Works since I've been here, so I will support this tonight, but I do want to make a statement that I think that this is part of a bigger issue that we probably, you know, the city administration needs to look at, that if we don't have enough workers on the Department of Public Works, then that needs to be addressed.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-11, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to one, C-11 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $50,000 be appropriated to the Highway Department overtime account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the rejection of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of eight to one, C-11 has been adopted. Moving on to C-14.
C-14, relative to the appropriation of $60,000 to the sanitation and drainage expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization account. I had a discussion with Mr. Brooks this afternoon about this particular communication. We're at the point in the construction season now where they don't believe they're going to really be able to get to much additional work. Likely to withdraw this petition, and he asked me to consider further time. They are working feverishly on Mill Street, but that was separately appropriated money, and that will continue and hopefully be completed this construction season. So I'm going to recommend, at Mr. Brooks's request, that we give C-14 further time at this juncture, and I'll check with my committee members.
I support that.
All right, through the chair, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Recommendation, Mr. President, for C-14 is further time.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to give C-14 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving C-14 further time, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-14 has been given further time. Moving on to C-15.
Yes, Mr. President. C-15, relative to the appropriation of $45,000 to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the library state aid reserve for appropriation account. This is an annual appropriation request. It's actually done as a courtesy. Jurisdictionally, this does not require a council vote. The city maintains a library state aid account, where the monies that we receive from the state for our library is placed. This money is used each year in part to meet our minimum materials budget, which the state aid is actually based upon. This year, our materials budget is, in fiscal 18, is approximately $200,000. So that's being made up out of 155,000. Of it is coming from the library budget as appropriated by us in the city budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, as well as this $45,000, which comes out of the state aid reserved account. In that account, we keep all of the state aid, and it can contain state aid for multiple prior fiscal years, that being fiscal 17, fiscal 16, or years before. It's sort of left there in case we ever get into a pinch in terms of meeting the materials budget. The idea, of course, is always to meet the minimum materials budget, so we get our state aid. And as I said, this will be supplement what's already in the library budget and be used to meet that materials budget, so we can keep our state aid on track. And as I said at the outset, this is here really as a courtesy to keep us impressed and informed of what's going on. The retired director made it a practice each year to send this down to us, really as sort of a courtesy and as a communication. It would be my position to grant C-15, and I'll check with my committee members.
Absolutely.
Through the chair, I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-15. Is there any discussion? Counselor Lancianni?
Thank you. The pair of shoes that Susan wore are kind of hard to fill, and I think that Mr. Bergman has done an excellent job. Every month, we get the letter from the library, and there's no problems. Everything seems to be working smoothly. And if, when you read the letter that he has attached to this request, he spells out what the situation is, so forth. I just think it needs to be complimented on what he has done to fill those shoes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I agree. Anybody else have any discussion on C-15? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-15, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-15 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $45,000 be appropriated to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the library state aid reserve for appropriation account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-15 has been adopted. Moving on to appointments. Is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We had an interview with Mr. Donald Basherash tonight for the Council on Aging, a term to expire April 15, 2020. And it became very apparent that many members of the council are very familiar with Mr. Basherash and that the council appreciates quite a few of his talents, one of which is, he is a licensed electrician, has been on the board previously and has been very involved with the senior senate for the past 15 years, so I can't imagine a better appointment. And certainly, I'm in a position to grant the position, the appointment of Donald Basherash on the Council of Aging. And I will go to my committee.
Okay. Counsel Marchionne?
Through the chair, I concur.
Okay, Counsel Lancianni?
I concur.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the appointment of Donald Basherash to the Council on Aging. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Schaffler-Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Budanza.
Yea.
Counsel Lancianni.
Yea.
Counsel Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Marchionne.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. Donald Basherash has been appointed to the Council on Aging. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and we have another appointment. Board of Appeals alternate member, is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Board of Appeals alternate member, Lee Barron, term to expire April 15, 2018. This was approved to be on the agenda last time on the suspension of rules. We did have a very short discussion that we didn't feel as though it was necessary for Mr. Barron to come down for an interview, as we, many of us are very familiar with Mr. Barron and also the fact that the Board of Appeals is down a member, and they are, have an issue with the fact that they might not have a quorum, so they need to fill this position right away. So my recommendation would be to grant the appointment of Lee Barron to the Board of Appeals alternate member, and I'll go to my committee.
Counsel Marchionne?
Through the chair, I concur.
Counsel Lancianni?
Good candidate.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like unanimous recommendation to appoint Lee Barron as an alternate member of the Board of Appeals. Is there any discussion? Counsel Marchionne?
Just a quick comment. You know, we had two gentlemen that are confirmed tonight by the council, and the great thing is, you know, both Mr. Basherash and also Mr. Barron served before. So this is not an entry level. It's going to take some time before I can figure things out to be a contributor. So I know in this particular case, we're talking about Mr. Barron, very well versed in what he has to do as a member of that ZBA, so I'm excited to see him coming back. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the appointment of Lee Barron to the Board of Appeals as an alternate member, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, that appointment is confirmed. Moving on to old business. We don't have any items on the agenda on the old business, so does anybody have any old business? Counsel Schaffler-Zephyr?
I do. Through the chair, to the Finance Chair. C-12, this was about the Gallagher $100,000 expense. We had a general. Did you get any more detail on that?
I haven't, but I will.
Okay, I'm going to hang on.
Redouble my efforts on that.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'll hang on to that.
Make a note.
Yep.
Okay. All right, is there any other old, Counsel Schaffler-Zephyr?
Thank you. This has to do with the ongoing request to have a meeting with the school committee, and I know that, you know, things are a little bit up in the air, given that the superintendent, although we do have an interim superintendent. I would still like to get an update from the school committee and from the acting or interim superintendent to see how the school department is faring, you know, giving the, given the, you know, the budget challenges that they faced. So I'd still like to follow up on that meeting. We've requested it at least three times, I think. So let's, could we request it again? It's just an update. I mean, it would be really nice just to have a conversation about, you know, how are things going? You know, what kind of help or support do you need? You know, what's going well? We know the janitors just came back. That was in the newspaper today. So it would be really helpful to get an update.
I also, you know, just to add on that, I was looking through my paperwork here tonight. I think it's tonight, November 13, at 6 o'clock. There's a meeting of Leominster School Committee Finance Subcommittee meeting, and I think they're going to be talking about a lot of the points that we are wondering about. So hopefully, after tonight's meeting, they'll be ready to go with us and provide us a little bit more detail on, you know, where we stand.
No, that's, that's a good point, and that would be...
Hopefully, maybe late, late November, we can see if they're ready.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Is there any other, any other old business? Seeing none, new business. We have the first reading of an ordinance, and I will refer this to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. By amending Section 13-34 entitled No Parking on Certain Streets, by inserting Spruce Street, Northside, starting 306 feet west of the intersection of Spruce Street and Whitney Street for a distance of 100 feet from pole number five to pole number four between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. My recommendation, Mr. President, is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a hearing for the second reading of the ordinance on November 27, 2017, at 6:55 p.m. I would ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, Counsel Frida, you all set? Counsel Marchionne?
I'm all set. I just have one question.
Sure.
I'll bring it up afterwards.
Okay, Counsel Schaffler-Zephyr?
Mm-hmm, I'm fine.
All right, Counsel Budanza?
Read.
Okay, so it sounds like a unanimous recommendation to grant the first reading of this ordinance and to establish a hearing for the second reading of the ordinance on November 27, 2017, at 6:55 p.m. Is there any discussion? Counsel Marchionne?
Through the chair, to the Chairman of Legal Affairs. There's no indication in the language on the petition. However, there is one multifamily on the corner of Spruce Street and Mechanic, and that's the only residential property going over to Whitney Street. And I'm just wondering, how far does that no parking extend to? Does it just in the section where the industrial pieces are, and it doesn't really affect the swing around the corner? Or does it go all the way to the corner? I'm just, and the reason why I'm saying is because if we, with no parking to the corner, I remember when I was a housing inspector, I mean, those cars were all over the place. So what does that do when we displace? There's at least six families in there that I'm aware of.
I don't, I don't think it's affecting the residents. This, if you recall, the reason for this was the commercial space and the parking in front of the...
Medical building.
The overhead doors and all that. That was, that was the reason for this.
So it's just that one section?
That's my understanding, yes. And that's what was brought up at the prior...
Through the chair, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
All right, is there any other discussion on the first reading of this ordinance? Okay, so seeing none, we will do this in a roll call to adopt the first reading of this ordinance and again, establish a hearing for November 27, 2017, at 6:55 p.m., beginning with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dobrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Schaffler-Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Feckley?
Yea.
Counsel Budanza?
Yea.
Counsel Lancianni?
Yea.
Counsel Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel Marchionne?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of this ordinance has been adopted, and the hearing has also been established. We also have an election order for the special state election on December 5, 2017. Is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report and read that election order?
I am, Mr. President. I should have it memorized by now. City of Leominster Special State Election, Election Order, December 5, 2017. Ordered that the city clerk, be and she hereby is authorized and directed to notify and warn the voters of the City of Leominster to assemble in their respective polling places in the several wards and precincts of the city designated by the city council as follows. Ward 1A, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 1B, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 1C, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward 2A, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Biscuit Avenue. Ward 2B, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Biscuit Avenue. Ward 2C, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Biscuit Avenue. Ward 3A, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 3B, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 3C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward 4A, Senior Citizen Drop-In Center, 5 Pond Street. Ward 4B, Leominster Veterans Quarters, 100 West Street. Ward 4C, Leominster Veterans Quarters, 100 West Street. Ward 5A, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward 5B, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward 5C, First Baptist Church of Leominster, 23 West Street. On Tuesday, the 5th, December 2017, then and there for the purpose of giving in their votes for the election of Senator to General Court, Worcester and Middlesex. And it is further ordered that the polls shall be opened at 7:00 a.m. and closed at 8:00 p.m., and that notice shall be given by publication of this order in a conspicuous place in the office of the city clerk. Per order, Leominster City Council, Tru Capu Test, Lynn A. Bouchard, City Clerk. So my recommendation would be to accept this election order, Mr. President.
Okay, Counsel Marchionne?
Through the chair, I concur.
Counsel Lancianni?
I...
Okay, so it sounds like a unanimous recommendation to accept and grant the election order for the special election. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the election order, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the election order has been adopted. There are no other items on the agenda for new business. Does anybody have any new business? Counsel Feckley?
I just have one comment, actually. Again, I find that, I find out a lot about the city when I read the Leominster Recreation Department minutes. They had a meeting on September 19, Leominster Recreation Commission, and under Maintenance Update, it says that the mayor wants all the parks cleaned twice a day because a needle was reported found at Third Street Splash Park. So I guess my question is, who is going to be cleaning those parks twice a day? The Recreation Department, the DPW? Is this something that was budgeted for? And why do we have to read the Recreation Department minutes to find out that a needle was reported found at Third Street Splash Park? Just comments.
Just comments.
Okay.
And a question.
Okay. We can inquire as to who, who does the cleaning there. I'm not, I know Mr. Sharpantier was down here at a meeting, and he was doing some kind of, some kind of maintenance, but I'm not.
Litchfield. Splash Park, probably that one, too.
Yeah, I'm not sure to what degree, but I know he does some, you know, he is a member of the Rec Commission, but we'll find out. Okay. Is there any other new business? Counsel Frida?
Yeah, just wondering if the clerk can give us any idea of the update on the recount? I'm sure the public would like to know what, where it's at.
They sent in their names today for certification. I've certified the names. They do still have to go through the Board of Registries on Wednesday. We've called a meeting of the Board of Registries for Wednesday at 4:00 p.m., and from then, they'll discuss the when, where, if they want to have the recount.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Seeing none, is there any items under the community calendar? Counsel Marshian?
If I, if you can bear with me for a couple of minutes, I just want to share some exciting things happening that I'm involved with here in the city with a lot of folks. Friday at 4:00 at Doyle Field will be the ceremony to dedicate a bench to Michael Austin, a very beloved member of this community who was involved with youth football for pretty close to four decades, a good part of that being with Pop Warner, the youth football program, and then Leominster High School. So what's happening, everyone's invited to attend. There's a lot of, a lot of visibility on social media, but I wanted to share that with, with everyone this evening as well. So with the grace of God, you know, the concrete pad is actually being poured in the next day and a half to two days max, the bench will be installed, and again, 4:00 on Friday. The bench location is going to be the main entrance gate on the Leominster High Football side, and it will be right near the ticket booth to the right of it. There's an area where there's a bench there right now, and that bench is going to be removed, and there's a bench being dedicated with a plaque that's going to read, "In Memory of Michael Austin," dedication to him, and the people who are involved with it are the Leominster High School Football Program, the Youth Football Program, Pop Warner, Community and Friends alike. So that's, that's going to be a nice piece to, if you can pop in on that. At 5:00 and 7:00 that same evening, we're excited to say that this year, there will be a pigeon bowl and a chicken bowl, and we're hosting both of them right at Doyle Field. So at 5:00, it'll be the Leominster High School freshman team playing the Fitchburg High School freshman team, and approximately 7:00 will be the junior varsity game between the two schools. So the Leominster Blue Devil Football Club will be hosting. Thanks very, we'll reach out and say thank you to the bamboozers who were burnt out after all they've done, especially this weekend with the district games down there, but we'll have the concession stand, so there'll be plenty of things for people to enjoy to nominal fee. On Wednesday, November 22, we host, the football program hosts, in collaboration with the Elks, the annual pre-game Thanksgiving banquet at the Elks, and that will be between 5:00 as the door opens to 7:00. We have an exciting evening planned. We have, we, every year, this is an event that everyone looks forward to in the football program. It's in honor of the varsity football team, and what will happen is, we have a guest speaker, Jimmy Remy, who's a former PGA president and class of 1972 graduate from Leominster High, that will be the keynote speaker. We also will be having a full course dinner, because turkey for most of us is on Thursday. This is a ham dinner with all the fixings, and that's being put on this year by Happy Jacks, Bill Coste and his staff. Going into the banquet, I believe, and Counsel Badanza can correct me if I'm wrong, LHS currently has 66 wins, and Fitchburg High School has 58 wins, and there have been 10 ties on the event, so that's unqualified until Mr. Badanza tells me otherwise, which I'm sure we're probably off here or there. There might be a couple rain dates or something in there, but the tickets are $20 apiece. We have pretty close to 100 kids that'll be there that evening. We'll also, if we can, we'll be inviting some extension to the kids that supported the program, the band students, cheerleaders, and also the theater arts kids for all, doing all the free face painting at all the home games, which was awesome. We're also, we've also invited the Leominster Youth Football League, eighth grade team that just won the regionals, and in December, they're going to the national championship down in Florida, so we're recognizing the 28 players and the three coaches, so they're all coming in, too. Again, tickets are $20 apiece to help defer expenses. We're looking for table sponsors in order to be able to take care of this. We have 25 tables, and we're asking $100 a table. It doesn't cover all the costs for all the meals, but it gets us pretty close to where we need to be, so we appreciate anyone's consideration. The Leominster Blue Devil Football Club is a 501(c), so you can take advantage of it from that point, too. So thank you very much for your time on that, I appreciate it, and hope to see, we'll see you at the game, and hope to see, all the councils are invited to come to the banquet this year also, so I have tickets for you at the end of the meeting. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Counsel Frida?
Following up on that, so Leominster Rotary Club's 23rd Breakfast with the Bands. Everyone knows we alternate every year. If the game is in Fitchburg, the breakfast is in Leominster. This year, the breakfast is in Leominster High School. That's at 8:00. We usually serve anywhere from 900 and 1,200 people, depending on the weather. It's a fun time. Football players help serve the meals, and just a great event. The community donates pretty much all the food that we serve, so it's a good opportunity to give the music program, all the proceeds go to the music programs of Fitchburg and Leominster. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of people there.
Through the chair.
Counsel, I think the date, the date, I think.
Yeah, Saturday.
Sunday, the 19th.
Sunday, 19th.
Are you also selling calendars as well?
Yes, I have calendars.
Okay.
And almost all of you are ahead of the game.
Counsel Badanza?
Following up on the football theme, Counsel Marshian's stats are correct. I would also point out, for the first time since 1899, Leominster took over the total points scored of the entire series last year, which I never thought I'd see happen. On November 18, Saturday evening, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, the Leominster Football Hall of Fame will be having its annual induction ceremony at the Doubletree. Tickets are available at my office, 36 School Street. They're $40 each, or to Carol's Insurance at 146 North Main Street. In fact, one of the inductees this year will be Michael Austin, unfortunately posthumously. I did have the pleasure of coaching for three years with Michael, and I can tell you that you would never have found a finer gentleman who gave more to the youth of this city than Mike. And not only the coach, but he was a mentor, and someone who really cared about the kids and every aspect of their life. Certainly, their education and home life was paramount with him. It wasn't just about football, so the Hall of Fame will be very proud to make Michael a member of the Hall of Fame on the 18th, and if anybody would like tickets, just seek me out.
Okay.
I have to make a note on Michael Austin, how special that guy was. He'd give you the shirt off his back, and the people that knew him really knew him. But one of the interesting things, my grandson, who was born blue and white blood, and to be a football player, he just loves and has a passion for the game, broke part of his hands his freshman year in a scrimmage, and of course, when we left the hospital, he had a cast up to his elbow, and the next thing I knew, he was up in his room with the door shut. We couldn't even talk to him, and he's on YouTube with the carving knife for Thanksgiving's turkey, trying to figure out how to cut his cast off, because he wasn't sitting out, he was playing. And now, all of a sudden, Mike Austin appeared out of nowhere and sat with Connor for an hour and a half on his bed that it would be okay, so that's the kind of guy he was. Just a big heart. So we miss him in the community, and we hope you can stop by and enjoy the dedication.
Okay. Is there anything else under the community calendar?
I do have one thing for the Leominster Lions Club. Friday, November 17, which is this coming Friday, November 17, at 6:30 p.m. at the Knights of Columbus on Lancaster Street, we are having our semi-annual meat raffle. It's always a good time, and we hope that everybody will stop by. We are very generous in our, we have seven tables, and so we hope to see as many people there as we can get. Is there anybody else that has anything else under the community calendar? If not, I will ask for a motion for.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, and a second, seconded by Counsel Schalfo-Zephyr. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. The city council for November 20, November 13, 2017 is now adjourned. Thank you all very much.